Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could call the meeting to order if you'd like to everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boyce, Martin, Dole, Crockett, Geske, Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes included in everyone's packet was the minutes of the April first, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review them. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion away the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented by the clerk. Motion by Dole, second by Boyce, roll call.
Dole, Boyce, Martin, Crockett, Phillips.
Motion carries. Public participation, the first person we have tonight is Ann Gates.
Good evening. Last time I was blessed to be here, I represented my family, which are all first responders. Now, I can proudly stand here and say, I've just been certified as a first responder. So I'd like to share some information with you because first responders are a passion for me. Carbon monoxide, hydrogen cyanide, carbon dioxide, cobalt poisoning, methane created by lithium and phosphorus burning, all inhaled. Hydrophoric acid, transdermal. EPA directed a sixteen-square-mile evacuation for four days over one thousand homes. Also mandated a four-foot-by-six-foot trench dug around the site to capture the toxic runoff from the fire to prevent river contamination. Fire apparatus on-site eight weeks due to continual spontaneous reignition of fire. Shrapnel confined to three hundred feet due to brick walls. Detonation could be heard for over three miles away. Multiple firefighters sustained both respiratory and skin injuries despite having PPE and SCBA, that's their personal private, their protection gear, and their self-contained breathing apparatus. No data on police, sheriff, or the National Guard that were also called in to assist as the governor declared it a state of emergency due to the fire. None of them had PPE, none of them had SCBA. So they were exposed to everything I just read with no protection. Upon return, citizens were given an N-95 mask and supplies to clean the exterior and interior of their homes, including foliage from the toxic residue of the smoke. Purple cave foam, tonnage of dry cement, water were all used in an attempt to control the fire, but none of them did. I was told the first time not to talk about the Morris Fire. Nothing to see here, nothing to learn. Why? Don't we learn from the mistakes we made? Fortunately, Chief Steps, that's the fire chief in Morris, because of what he went through, because of what he learned by experience, keeping his crew safe, as well as the others that were called in to help with this fire, there was a lithium battery storage facility. He was able, two weeks later, to help another fire chief that was facing the same type of fire but did not have the training. Because of what he learned hands-on, he was able to help. I challenge you to pay attention to what you're doing here. This endangered the entire Morris community. Fourteen square miles evacuated for four days. That's a lot of people, over a thousand homes. Please consider it.
Thank you.
Lives are at stake here. Thank you.
The next commenter is Terry King.
I'm back. Okay. I'm asking the village administrator, because I know you won't answer my question, so I'm going to meet him in his office at ten o'clock tomorrow. Trump has been on TV last week and said, he becomes president, EV's gone. I want to know what's going to happen to the tax dollars that will not be paid because the federal government does not pay taxes. So I want to know how that hole will be filled. And I know you got to have a plan on that. Second, are you going to build pickleball courts in legacy for the mothers that can play while their children are playing on the playground or in the little water park? Third, somebody here doesn't like Trumpsters. I hear it's a woman. Guess what? I'm going to have a Trump rally. I do one within two hundred miles of the city. I'm also putting one on during the Democratic Convention. And we may bring in a junior. So, I'm just telling you, don't call people Trumpsters like we're bad people. We are not bad people, and that's you. Don't call me a Trump, don't, don't make it derogatory. This country has, you can vote either way. You vote your way, I'll vote my way. But do not make anybody here feel bad that they're Trumpsters. If you like Biden, I still have Biden. I have fifty yard sites for Biden in my garage, because nobody would buy them. I'll give you one. That's it.
Thank you. The next commenter is Francine Fattama.
I'm sure you've all heard the term civic duty. Well, seems like they're bygone words in growing circles in this country, including the president. He would have college students not have to pay back loans that they freely took and have the rest of the taxpayers foot the bill. That's what's going on right now. So it is with civic duty in Mantino. The concerned citizens of Mantino just want their representatives in local government to preserve what Mantino has in a responsible manner, not throw it away in accepting Goshen, a communist company. It, Goshen, has allegiance to Communist China, not the U.S. of A. That's reality. Stop living in a dream world. This economic alliance with Goshen is troubling to us citizens who know it will only come to ill for our lovely village. And something else that's on the agenda regarding contracts, I certainly have questions reading, you're going to, well, he'll have a motion, to approve the contract with the village administrator, Chris LaRocque, and a motion to improve the new chief of police contract. Why isn't an amount of money, they're not going to work for free, is that still going to come, like, at the next meeting? I would like an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Bob Forsythe.
Tim, this goes directly to you. The Economic Alliance Board is nothing but a bunch of self-righteous, self-centered, egotistical men that put themselves in a group, that makes the decision for Kankakee County. You're not elected, you're like a little, you're like a group of gangsters. You solicit money from businesses by writing letters and asking for donations. You know, your group caused Goshen to be here. Your group reached out and everything else, and you've worked with JB, we know that, and Chris LaRocque, because you're our go-to person. I'd like to know, at the meeting the other day, were you on vacation? Do you have a vacation day, or did we pay you to be at that meeting? And the meeting before, when it was at Goshen? That group of economic board members, you have no business being there. That's a self-private, that's a private group. And if you're not on vacation, your ass is at work. It's our dime you're on. You can answer my question. You're here, you're our go-to guy. And again, you sit here like an idiot. You know what? Public Works, I heard, and I believe this, because I seen it from my own eyes, were picking up at Goshen. I seen village trucks over there. And we're on, and we're on payroll. Our Public Works guys don't belong there. Our Public Works guys don't belong cutting state property. It's not our job. The other thing is, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for grass? You know what? There's a park at Eighth and Maple. You may not want to use it for that, but it's zoned a park. I asked for four trees to get planted there, and I even had your Impact Award person at the Economic Alliance Board Meeting sign the paper that he would like to see the trees too. But you know what? It never got to board members. It went to you and went to you. And we got a no. Tim, I'm tired of your crap. You need to go. Because you are an Economic Alliance Board person, which has nothing to do with the village of Mantino, and you don't answer your questions, but you're self-appointed. You got Jeff Bennett and Michael Boyd, they're idiots. And you guys sit there and you, you praise yourselves. It's like, really, it's like going to Hollywood and the actors, they're half-assed, but we're going to, we're going to praise ourselves anyhow. So your Economic Alliance Board Meeting has nothing to do besides you guys ruin Kankakee County. And Chris, if you better, we're going to pull FOIAs, we'll find out if you're on vacation or not.
Thanks, your time is up.
And if you're not on vacation, you, you got theft and you should take, you should be fired.
Thank you.
Theft of time.
The next commenter is Annette Lamore.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to give you a more positive thing here. We are still getting donations from all over. I mean, I've seen some big checks come in, a lot of smaller ones, and people hand me money for, for our legal fund. We are paying our legal fund. We don't have the village to pay that, for that, for us. I want to announce we're having a puzzle race. For those of you who like to work jigsaw puzzles, or any of your friends or neighbors, it's on Friday night, April the twenty-sixth. It's at the Mantino Sportsman's Club at seven PM. Anyone in the listening audience who's interested could call me. My phone number is eight-one-five-three-two-five-nine-four-eight-one. We are all working the same five-hundred-piece puzzle. I think we already have about twenty people signed up. But you can have a team of up to four to five people, and there is a donation involved, and that donation goes towards our legal fund. And we, we will be giving prizes. So if you're looking for something fun to do, make your day a little better, join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Denise Nicholson.
Good evening. After attending the Kankakee Economic Alliance Board Meeting on April eleventh at the Kankakee Hilton, I have some observations and comments. At the EA meeting, guest speaker Mayor Curtis of Kankakee outlined the future of interchanges three oh eight and three twelve and the potential businesses and residential developments. To me, that was enlightening to see, and he answered questions at the end of his presentation. As I was sitting there, I thought, this is what I've been asking for the last couple of times I have spoken at these very meetings. A town hall where the mayor presents future plans for Mantino. Nothing secretive, but upfront. Afterwards, the residents can ask you questions and you answer. An irony from the EA meeting, Chad Miller, representing agriculture, spoke about educating Kankakee fourth graders about farming. They took a field trip to learn that there's more than seeds and soil and agriculture. I applaud that. I sat listening and thought, yet, the Economic Alliance is more interested in a state that we are seventy-five percent agriculture, but maybe not by the time Pritzker's done with us, suddenly turning the best soil in the world for farming and ranching into solar panels and wind turbine farms. Will there be any farmland left in Kankakee County for these fourth graders with the Economic Alliance's progressive green vision? You, Mr. Mayor, never asked if there were any questions after your presentation. You mentioned in your EA presentation, Highway Nine Spruce Street Project is short two million dollars, and you were scrambling for money. Sounds like there's going to be many projected projects that will be more costly than anticipated. And who will eventually pay the bills of these projects? Well, of course, us, the taxpayers. Because whether these projects get special grant monies or monies from the county, state, or feds, it is us, the taxpayers, who give the dollars to fund for payment. I just want to know, are there going to be any more surprising developments yet to come to destroy more precious farmland like a Midwest hydrogen hub, possibly? I mean, we deserve answers. Transparency, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could turn it to another Dalton.
That concludes the public participation portion. Village President's report tonight, we've got an appointment with, Ryan Marion is not able to serve on the GIS Committee any farther, as long as, since he's appointed to the County Board. We have a representative that serves on the GIS Committee. He's done that for the last several years, so we have to replace him. So I'd like to appoint Jim Hanley to serve on the County GIS Committee. This is, like I say, this is a position that we, the village, has had for a long period of time. They have, I believe it's four to five meetings a year, a year. They had one just last week. So is there any questions in regards to Jim Hanley serving on the GIS Committee? If not, can I have a motion to approve? Motion by Crockett, second by Phillips. All of it, roll call, please.
Crockett.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Boyce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Motion carries. The other items I have on my agenda is a motion to approve the liquor, amusement, and video gaming license for FY twenty-four twenty-five as submitted by the village clerk. This is the last meeting, actually, this would be the last business meeting that we have for the year. May first starts the new fiscal year, and all the licenses expire on May first. So I have a list of all the liquor license holders that are up for renewal for, for next year, and they are the Mantino Sportsman's Club, the Mantino American Legion, the Back Forty Saloon, Anthony's Pizzeria, Route Fifty North, the Pub at Midtown, Chocotup Billiards, Sammy's Pizza, and Darla's Deli and Cafe. Those are the liquor license, the packaged liquor license, or the, the bar liquor license. Packaged liquor license are Burkett Superfoods, Max Convenience Stores, number thirteen-eight-six, Minute Mart on Route forty-five, Max Convenience Stores, number one-eighty-three, CBS Drugstore, Mantino Liquor, Liquor, Inc., Casey's Retail on Locust, and Casey's Retail on Division. Then also, the other two are Monacles and Los Dos Publos Restaurant. We also have Winnie's Bistro and Riley's LLC. For amusement licenses, we have Nightlight Vending, Route Fifty North, and Anthony's Pizzeria and Pub. Those will be the items, or the liquor license and gaming license that'll be on the consent agenda later on in the meeting. Also, on my portion, I have a motion to approve a contract with Chris LaRocque as village administrator, and also with Al Swinford as the chief of police. They originally had contracts, the first term, four years ago. The last three years, I believe it is, the contracts, we did not renew them, they just were working, obviously, with no contract. This is a one-year contract with the same benefits, the same salaries, as they currently have with the increase that all the union and all the employees get as of May first. They're exactly the same as what they have, and appear on the agenda later on in the consent agenda.
Shouldn't we look in to see if we have enough time?
The village administrator's report, Mr. LaRocque.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Committee reports, public works and utilities, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda, but I do have a meeting on the twenty-third of this month, seven AM. Thank you.
Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
Naturally.
Naturally, that's when you start.
By old business, by new business. Well, I'm not here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you can hear me cough?
Yes.
We have a consideration, a motion to authorize the purchase of Thieves Park Synthetic Grass Servicing Material for the, from Forever Lawn Chicago, at a cost of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And this is a Sourcewell contract price. Jim, can you explain why we broke that up?
Yes. We took this out of the total for Thieves Park originally, because the village is able to purchase products through Sourcewell, which is a state and federal contract company that is able to generate the purchase of either equipment or products at a discounted rate. So the material labor was separated out of that and then purchased separately by the village.
Substantial savings to the village.
Yes. Anywhere fifteen, twenty percent you're looking at.
Right.
A lot of times machinery, equipment, and then products like this. A lot of villages and government bodies are buying stuff like this, so.
All right. Thank you, Jim. And no meeting is set up yet? If we need one, we'll have one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Public Safety and Health, Mr. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. My public safety meeting is, this Wednesday at seven AM here in the village boardroom. Everyone is thankful to all the people, the police chief, the fire chief, the mayor, the trustees, the concerned citizens, reaching out to our local legislators. Senator Napoleon Harris, he's the senator of the fifteenth district, I dot, Representative Thaddeus Jones, twenty-ninth district representative, Jackie Haas, Illinois House, seventy-ninth district representative, junior senate district operations engineer, Prester's Office, Patrick Joyce, Illinois State Senator, Kankakee County and Piattone Mantino Township, to get some positive action at the intersection of Route Fifty and Kankakee-Piattone County Road. If you drive out there, you will find flashing solar lights, rumble strips.
And a big white sign that I put up.
And signs on both sides of the road.
As a concerned citizen, as I've lived here four years.
Thank you. I did put you in concerned citizens, I did mention that. So, that say that you are coming upon a stop sign ahead from the west and the east. In Friday's Daily Journal, the front page story was about a number of accidents occurring at the county line and Route Fifty. Far too many are occurring at one intersection, and physical changes are needed to help present, prevent more accidents. But no matter how many changes are made to the signs and roadway, drivers are ultimately responsible for driving safely. Ninety-four percent of all accidents in this country are related to human error. Up to forty-four percent of accidents are caused by cell phone distractions. Here are some easy tips to help keep drivers alert behind the wheel. Don't get distracted, stay focused on what's in front of you. Put down the phone. Remember forty-four percent. Keep your eyes moving, try to anticipate that someone or something may run out in front of you. Don't drive sleepy, it can be just as dangerous as drunk driving. Don't get too comfortable, it causes complacency and makes you less aware. And as I said, I thank everyone that's involved in sending all the letters and emails to many, many bodies to get.
Just why wasn't it done years, I'm sorry if I'm talking, why wasn't it done years ago?
Okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any items on the agenda this evening. The planning and zoning committee meeting scheduled for the twenty-third has been canceled, and the next planning commission meeting is scheduled for May fourteenth, six PM here in the village boardroom. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Mr. Geske is not here tonight, but he does have a few items on the agenda. Mr. Phillips, will you take those?
Yeah. A new old business, new business, resolution twenty-three dash one-four dash A, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement by, and between the county of Kankakee and the city of Kankakee Village Bourbon A, Village of Mantino, Kankakee County Convention and Visitors Bureau, in cooperation for promotion of tourism in Kankakee County, Illinois. As previously discussed at a committee meeting, this resolution is to facilitate continuance of the Kankakee, Kankakee County Convention, Visitors Bureau, and village participation in that organization. Revenue for this funding will come from a tax imposed on two local hotels. The tax already exists, but will move more from collection by the county to collection by the village. The promotional, promotional tourism experts are considered violent, well worth the investment. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-six, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter eleven, Occupation Taxes, three dash eleven dash five, hotel tax of the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. Payment of bills of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents, includes TIF one of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen, thirty-seven. No bills paid between board cycle. The next meeting will be four seventeen, twenty-four, at seven AM in the village. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Phillips. Just sort of clarification, the, the resolution is intergovernmental agreement between the taxing bodies. The tax is already being collected, only it's being collected currently by the county and then dispersed to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. With the new ordinance, it will be collected by the village, and a certain portion of that will be dispensed to the visit, the hotel, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it's no additional tax on the hotels, the only change is where they're paying it. Instead of paying it to the county, they'll be paying it to the village, and then the village will be paying it forward to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. General Government, you have anything?
I have nothing on the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. So the items we'll be voting on in the consent agenda are as follows. Under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, we have a motion to approve the liquor, amusement, and video gaming license for FY twenty-four twenty-five as submitted by the village clerk. Item number two is a resolution twenty-three fourteen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement by, between the county of Kankakee, city of Kankakee, village of Bourbon A, village of Mantino, and the Kankakee County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the promotion of tourism in Kankakee County, Illinois. Item number three is ordinance twenty-three twenty-six, which is an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter eleven, Occupation Taxes, Section three dash eleven dash five, hotel tax of the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. Item number four is a motion to approve the contract with Chris LaRocque, village administrator. Item number five is a motion to approve the contract with Alan Swinford, chief of police. Warning and bids, we have a motion to authorize the purchase of Thieves Park Synthetic Grass Service Material from Forever Lawn Chicago at a cost of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four eighty-three, sixty-five, and a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of one eighty-two, two oh nine, ninety-five, of which thirty-five thousand, eight, or eighteen is the final distribution of TIF one, which are going to the various taxing bodies in TIF one, and that will be the end of TIF one. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to take a single roll call. What are the questions, the passage of the agenda items as read? Motion by Boyce.
Second.
Second by Martin, roll call.
Boyce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'd accept the motion to approve by amass vote the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read. Motion by Crockett.
I'll second.
Second by Dole, roll call.
Crockett.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Boyce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Phillips.
Motion carries. Mr. Boyce, do you have anything tonight you want to talk about? Mr. Martin.
No.
Mrs. Dole.
No, it's just good to see improvement there on fifty and twelve thousand. So I don't know what, why it wasn't done before. I know that there was a major accident on one thirteen and Warner Bridge Road many years ago, and they didn't have any signage out there then. It was after problems like that, that things that get done. This is an improvement. So we should be thankful and happy that things are improving.
Mr. Crockett.
I'll give you that.
Mr. Phillips?
No problem.
And finally, the letter that I'd like to read to address to the board and village trustees from, the letter is, this is my official notification to you that I'll be retiring on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. retiring on April 26, 2024. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation and gratitude to each and every one of you that I had the opportunity to work with. I did have the chance to work with a few different departments over the years, and I enjoyed all of them. I do look forward to the next chapter in my life. I will truly miss working at the village. Being born and raised in Mantino, my heart has always been here and always will be. In the future, it will be, in the future, if there are any questions or puzzles that I can help, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Best regards, Jolene Hayes." Jolene is retiring later this month, at the end of a 22-year career with the village of Mantino. We had a retirement party for her last week at the police department, and I just want to congratulate Jolene and thank her for the hard work and all the time that she's spent, you know, working here for the village. She's done a great job, and I want to, like I say, thank her from all the, you know, village board members to, for the work that she's done, and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. With that, I have nothing further. I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Phillips, second by Dole. Roll call.
Phillips. Dole.
Yes.
Voice.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, for watching. Thanks.